Call the meeting in order. Please stand for the flag slit.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk call roll, please?
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Counselor Fisher?
Here.
Counselor Griswold?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp?
Here.
Counselor Bowlin and Counselor Scott are absent this evening.
Okay, are there any corrections or additions to the council minutes from December 18th and January, uh, I'm sorry, December 18th, January 8th, and the 14th?
No. It's been moved for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the council minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes passed. Consent calendar. We have tonight's agenda. We have appointments, Walt Windolowski, Jason Williams, Rob Emmons, Ron Whitlatch to a Canal Negotiations Committee, and the Board of Minutes Bike and Pedestrian Committee, and the Mayor's Youth Council. And we also have on their liquor licenses for New Outlet Grocery Outlet and Momji Sushi Bar and Restaurant, and change in ownership at the Knot Hole. We have R O W dedication for trail use by Gerson, and R O W vacation authorization to proceed petitioner Zimix.
It's been moved for approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent calendar passes.
Momiji.
Momiji, is that how you say it? Well, I'm looking forward to that.
Oh, me too.
Momiji.
Momiji.
Okay, we have an opportunity now for public comments. The council welcomes all respectful comments regarding city's business. Citizens may address the council by approaching the microphone, signing in, stating their name and address for the record. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the city council. Council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city clerk will accept and distribute any written comments at a speaker's request. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Okay.
It'll take me longer to write down my stuff than it will take for my comment. I just wanted to thank you very, very much, especially Chief Stevenson and all of his staff and the Lynn County Dog Control. The issue I brought up last month has been pretty much resolved, and I greatly, greatly appreciate all the help that I got.
Good, very good. And as a side note, too, I also received a call from a person who used to live at the back area on the other side of the street and who's no longer living there trying to sell his house.
Right.
And had some issues also with the dog issues, so just another comment from the public that there was some dog issues there, some nuisance issues, so. Very good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Anybody else from the public like to speak? Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, people. Bill Sullivan.
Hey, Bill.
Mayor and council. Well, I'm gonna try to be a little smarter this time on my spiel. A rose. Smells like a rose, looks like a rose, it is a rose. On 1/8/14, mayor, council, held an executive meeting to relieve Mr. Lavick of his duties as City of Lebanon. And then a regular session, which it could have been done at any other time and saved Mr. Lavick the embarrassment before an audience. On 1/9, morning paper, mayor brought up Mr. Lavick's prior unemployment, stating that sizing and prior unemployment would not consider rehiring him. The City of Lebanon did a thorough round background check on Mr. Lavick prior to working history, which had nothing to do with the City of Lebanon. It shows the true colors and puts the blame on Mr. Lavick instead of themselves. Thank you.
Any other colleagues in the public? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go into the presentation. Gene Johnson, Lynn County Tax Appraiser.
Hi, Gene.
Hello. I'm Gene Johnson, and I'm here to represent the Lynn County Assessors Office, and I agreed to come over. It was a lot, lot easier to come this evening than the last time I was here, because as you all know, we did prevail in the Lowes' appeal. Don't want to get too overexcited, because they still have appeal rights to move this on to the regular division.
When is their deadline to appeal?
It'll be like the end of March. They had like 14 days to say something, you know, for all parties to talk about the decision, and then the final decision was given to us, and so it's 60 days from that time. And so we really don't know for sure the avenue that they're going to take. I'm afraid, I was out of the office today, I got back to the office and I had a message from the clerk's office where their attorney had called. They have filed a appeal again with the Board of Property Tax, the Lynn County Board of Property Tax, for the 2013 year. I was hoping that they would withdraw that once they got the decision if they were not going to proceed, but the attorney called and said that they were going to be taking it on to magistrate. So that was kind of disappointing news, that it's, kind of sounds like they're not going to be following the decision of the magistrate, that they will probably be moving forward with it. But it's their appeal rights, and we just have to be there, you know, represented. I will say that I was really pleased with the decision in that the, as we saw, the appraisal that Lowes had paid money for had a lot of holes in it, and one might think, well, did we have to spend the money we spent if their appraisal was so bad? But you don't want to go in unprepared, and another thing is the magistrate has the authority, and often they exercise it where they can change the role themselves based on the testimony. And so that being that we had done such a good job on our appraisal and our representation with our legal counsel, we basically did the magistrate's work for him, that he agreed with our value, he agreed with our methodology, and he sustained the role value as set. And without that backup, I've seen many instances where they decide to reduce or often go sometimes in the middle, and so that was very good news that it sustained it. So if any one of you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them for you.
Well, we talked right after I heard about the decision, and I just want to thank you and the office for the work that you did and for sticking up for us, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome, and again, I thank you for the support. I don't, I've been in the office for 26 years and I haven't, I haven't seen such a thing where we, you know, join teams and everybody that's got something at stake, and I think it was a good example, so hopefully we can do it again if we have to.
Gene, should they choose to move forward, what's the timeframe for judgment?
I'm not exactly sure how this is gonna work. In my opinion, I don't know that they needed to file a 2013 appeal, because if they were to prevail on the 2012 appeal, there's a, it's called adjudication, and so that value stays for five years. And so a lot of times they will file a subsequent year appeal to kind of protect their appeal rights, whether they have to or not. I don't believe they do. But, so I don't know if they're going to just move 2012 to the regular division or accept the decision for 2012 and not go forward.
Protect the others.
Yeah, and then just start over again with the 2013, so then we will have to go to magistrate again. And I will say that we attempted to save taxpayer money, your money, Lynn County's money, everybody's money, by asking to move this directly to the regular division, and we got opposition from Lowes and their attorney, and so now here we are, we're probably gonna have to go and all that, you know, I mean, it was legal fees and do it all over again, so. I don't, you know, if everybody knows that it's gonna go to that point, I don't know why they forced us to go through the magistrate level, so, but they did.
How many times can they appeal? If they should lose this one, can they appeal again?
Well, I think there's some circumstances that would come into play with that. I believe if they were to come back with their same appraisal, their same information, their same basis, I believe we would probably file a motion for a frivolous appeal and saying, "Look, the court's already decided this, we would like you to throw it out." Now, if they go get a brand-new appraisal and they have new information, I would say they could probably do it year after year, which it doesn't seem like a level playing field, does it?
Yeah.
Because if they get the five-year adjudication, we have to go, I mean, we can't, it isn't frozen for us prevailing, but that's the way it goes, so.
Is there any award, and I don't, I do very little work at the tax court, is there any provision for attorney's fees for the prevailing party?
It's very seldom does that happen.
What about on an appeal? I know in regular court, if you have non-minding arbitration and then you appeal that arbitration and you don't improve your position when you appeal it to the next level, there's a mandatory award of attorney's fees to the prevailing party? Do you know if that's a provision in the tax court? In other words, if they don't improve their, if they appeal it and they don't improve their position, is there a provision for attorney's fees in that?
I think maybe under the frivolous appeal, that there may be, but under regular costs, the most that we usually see is for copies and all that, the expensive stuff just never gets awarded.
Right, mandatory award of cost, but not for attorney's fees.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Gene, appreciate it.
Thanks, Gene.
Thanks for coming. Okay, next up, insurance brokerage services award contract commencing March 1st, Dean Baugh. Okay.
So back in November, we came before you and asked for permission to go out with an RFP on insurance, insurance agent of record. And what this is, is basically it's our insurance broker. The reason we did this, we liked the person we had before, we had no problems with them, but the city hadn't had a contract for a number of years. It was, I guess it was one of those, it was done on a handshake, so we went out with an RFP, we received three proposals. Since we only received three, and they were all three really good proposals, we interviewed each of the, we brought each person in, each company had an interview with them, we gave them 30 minutes to kind of present their case, then we had 30 minutes of question and answer with each one, then we called references the next day. So after this process, we went through, we decided to stay with the broker we have currently, which is Barker Earling out of Corvallis. The other folks who applied, one was out of Portland, one was out of Salem, and like I said, they were really good proposals, and some of the things we learned in those proposals, we're talking to Mark Er, yeah, I can't even say his name.
Erlinger.
Erlings, Parker Erlings, and we're talking to them about some of the things we learned in the other proposals, saying, "Oh, you know, these are some things we'd like to look at," because they were really good. So what we're doing now is we're asking the council to award the contract, which will commence March 1st, so they'll be involved in our current year renewals, which will take effect in July. It's a three-year contract with additional three one-year extensions, sort of looking at. So at this point, that's the end of the staff. If the council has any questions? There.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Dean.
And if you ever have any questions about your insurance, you can, we can always get you in contact with them, they'll discuss all kinds, whatever you want with them. So they're really open, easy to talk to.
Very good. Nurtained a motion to approve the award contract?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and approved, moved and seconded to approve the insurance brokerage services with Barker's Erlings. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. Number two, Vine and Maple Street Sewer Project. Award contract, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. One note on that, the, we originally had planned to do Vine and Maple Sewer. Turns out that those combined, we didn't have enough funds, so we ended up, just when we did the actual council approval to advertise, we did just the Maple Street portion over off of Oak Street, actually off Fifth Street, down to the West End. Another item of note, as we were out for bid on this, we had sewer collapse on East Oak Street. Looked like about 30 feet, we had a hard time getting the camera, we started losing laterals in the meantime, so we had a minor repair done. We were able to TV the rest of it, and it looks like the remainder of it is in pretty rough shape as well, so we added it to this project and actually bid it along with the Maple portion. That's why the estimate's quite a bit higher than what we originally advertised, as opposed to doing it as a change order. We had them bid it. You see, we had 13 bids. Kipco Incorporated of Eugene, Oregon was the lowest responsive bidder, and we are recommending award of the project to them. I can answer any questions that you might have.
It's encouraging to see that many bids come up.
Yeah, it is. That was, that's actually a pretty good slew of contractors.
Pretty good range in there as well.
It's a huge range. I'm wondering if some of them even looked at the plans.
I don't think they wanted to work.
No, no.
I would move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, approved. It's been moved and seconded to approve the Vine and Maple Street Sewer Project Award Contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Number three, Dog Nuisance Complaint, presented by City Manager Walt Windolowski.
Very good, thank you. Last month, we had an issue about parking dogs, which I'm pleased to hear was finally resolved, which is great. Almost makes this entire presentation moot at this point. But generally, there was a question on some historical background on our dog regulations. I just note that the earliest one we could find goes back to 1980 relating to animals and defined offenses and nuisances. We had an ordinance in 1989 that limited the number of adult dogs per household to two in grandfathered larger ownerships. We had some further revisions in 2000, 2007 with regard to nuisance regulations, and finally in 2010, not 20,100, but 2010, we amended a previous ordinance regarding the number of dogs per household, effectively placing no limit. My general summary is that I think this has worked well so far, and one nuisance case that I am aware of ultimately was resolved, and at this juncture, I see real no need to change the regulations we have in place.
It's always a hard thing. I mean, you know, it is always something that needs to be looked at and needs to be dealt with, I don't even want to, with common sense. So I'm really, I was, I'm really very pleased we resolved her issue.
Yeah, and as always, as you and I were talking the other day about this, I think having less in something like this area as far as regulations, I think is a little bit better, because it's a little difficult to enforce, and then you've got the grandfathering in of, if we come back and decide we want three dogs now, then what about the people with four? And then they're grandfathered in, how do we go out, how do we enforce it? And it just becomes a difficult process. I think with our nuisance, and obviously it worked in this case, and sometimes it just needs to be brought to our attention. Chief was able to get in and the dog enforcement, so I think this is, I think what we have is pretty good in place. I don't really see any need for us to go any further with anything, just anything different from the council, or?
Yeah. Sounds good, good to go.
Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Number four, City Manager Report.
Well, again, you have the City Manager Report in there. I think it's about 11 pages. I certainly hope you appreciate all the good things that are going on here. Linda graciously reminded me before the meeting that if you cannot make the meeting, please contact Linda beforehand, so we can make sure we have a quorum. Is that correct, Linda?
And the mayor, both of us.
Yes.
And the mayor, thank you very much. Good with that. Other than that, I was harassed by Bob and Wayne yesterday at the ODVA, the walkthrough of seeing where's all this economic development coming. I just want to note that I am looking at a potential project for downtown tomorrow with our building official. I am aware of another project out on Airway, and I also got word today that the warehouse or property project will be moving forward, so I'll try to keep up with you guys.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, real good.
We'll be remaining you.
Yeah, I know, I know you will, but, but 8:00 on March 17th.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Some good news.
Um, I'll go ahead and bring it up to you.
Okay.
And he can talk about it.
Up to you.
I've been discussing, Alex Paul had talked to me about marijuana dispensaries in our city, and I was not aware of any official stance that we had taken, I was just under the impression that we hadn't done anything, and that's not the case, so I wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, and I would like council to understand what the city's position is right now.
We looked at the issue of marijuana dispensaries, and every new business in town is required to have a business registration. It's not a license, it's just they register the business. But in the process of signing that, they indicate that what they're doing does not violate state or federal law. Now, I know the current U.S. Attorney General is not chasing after Colorado and Washington, but until the federal law changes, the possession and sale of marijuana is still illegal. And so at this juncture, it would be awful hard for us to sign off on a business registration to allow this particular type of use while it's still illegal on the federal level. We're just concerned that that would violate our business registration process. On a planning note, we would see these as clinics, if you will, that would be allowed wherever clinics, medical offices are allowed. My concern at this point, too, is that medical clinics in some cases can be allowed in certain residential zones. There's no restriction as to their location relative to schools or churches. So if the council is considering opening this for further discussion, I would suggest that we do a little exploration with regard to our development code. But as it stands now, it is our interpretation that our business registration requirements prohibit medical dispensaries, marijuana dispensaries within our city.
Yes, there's, I thought there was a statute now that in the state of Oregon, medical, and that's what you were saying, they're allowed, they are allowed, medical dispensaries.
Medical dispense, marijuana dispensaries are allowed under state law, but that does not mean that that law specifically provided that local cities, towns, and counties can't have their own regulations. Very well may get addressed, even at this special session that's going on right now. There was actually hearing on a bill, I think yesterday morning, actually two bills. One, one of the bills would specifically allow cities, towns, and counties to prohibit medical marijuana sites, which in their editorial basically means that we'd have them in Eugene and Portland, maybe Ashland, and that's it. There's another bill that would prohibit local communities, cities, towns, and counties from limiting or in any way restricting the establishment of medical marijuana. I don't know if the special session is going to address it. I was surprised I got a hearing as early as it did, so it led me to believe that they might actually come out with more direction. At this point, you know, I would definitely do a wait-and-see policy right now to see if at least it's going to get clarified at the state level during the special session. And as you can see, I mean, there's cities and towns all around are trying, are struggling with how to deal with this.
Because I have been, I have received two calls, and they weren't asking me for a city councilor position on it, they're asking me as a citizen, and so I gave them my answer, but I think they were probing.
Hey, Gary.
Probing.
One other thing, I've also had three inquiries from people interested in opening a dispensary, and, you know, we've been pretty consistent with all of them in terms of our response, and up to this time, they went, "We understand, and we'll just find some other place." So that's kind of worked out well.
So far.
Maybe we'll get some more direction.
And I mean, the next step is, once we, once we figure, once we know what the special session is over, and we want to really address the issue, there are certainly things within the law that we can do at a local level, at least at this point, which would include limiting where they could go, as far as close to schools, close to daycares, close to churches, and limit them, zoning issues that way, that we might want to address to the extent that we either get direction from the state that, you know, we don't have the authority to disallow them, or if we, you as a council, decide that state law says it, we want to allow them, but we want to allow them with these restrictions. That's obviously a policy decision of this council. And my apologies to the mayor, it wasn't a matter of not talking, telling the mayor about the city's position on marijuana, it was more of the, and anybody that's been reading the Albany newspaper and the discussion that's been going on with the City of Albany over the medical marijuana dispensaries, it's no longer a secret that no city wants to be the test guinea pig in this, in this matter. We don't want to be the one that has to fight this up to the Court of Appeals, the Supreme Court, just for it to get whatever the decision to be thrown out by the vote of the people in a year, year and a half anyways. So it was a concerted effort, not to necessarily keep it from the mayor, but to not, not be, you know, out there with it. Well, now, pretty much everybody's out there with it after Albany's, Albany's gone through the whole thing that they've gone through. I mean, SIO's addressing it, pretty much everybody's addressing it now, and it's pretty much a consensus among city attorneys that the best way, at this point, under the current statute of the law, is if you have an ordinance or a resolution that limits either business license or business registrations to those that are, limits them to those that are in violation of federal law, that that's the best way to do it, because not only then does it limit them, they have to take that appeal up to Luba, which is a different forum than I think than the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court, and probably better, a better place for that decision to be made.
Thank you, Trey. Anything else? Sure.
Yeah. I want to say, a couple of meetings ago, I proposed the, some zone changes along North Main and, well, along South Main and Russell Drive neighborhood, and it was also in talking with Counselor Bowlin about some changes to our temporary use code. I must apologize, I have not been able to start that, I've been busy with a few other things, so, understand it's still on the stove, so to speak, but it's on the back burner right now, so.
March 17th.
Yeah, March, I think, I think March 18th, I'll jump right into it, so, so I have not forgotten you, it's just going to take a little while to get to it.
And with that said, I would like to thank you for the job you've been doing, and also thank the staff for working together. I've just seen them come together and work as a team, and I really appreciate that, because that's what we need right now, is just to kind of get the team moving forward and prepared for Gary when he comes.
I have nothing but great things to say for everyone who's, you know, the department managers, staff, everyone's pulling together, and frankly, the department managers have kept me out of trouble, so I want a real shout-out to them.
Thanks. Is that it? Okay. Items from councils, I have one quick item. We're having the celebration for Paul McQuiston, our hometown hero, Saturday, the 22nd, at 11:00 a.m., and it has been changed due to location issues, it's going to be at the River Center. So that'll be Saturday, the 22nd, 11:00. So that'll be Saturday, the 22nd, 11:00 a.m. at the River Center, all the public's invited. Friday night, I believe the Elks is going to have a separate event that the public will be invited to also, and that will be at the Elks Club Friday night. I don't know exactly what time, I think it's seven, six or seven. But that's exciting, and we're real proud of him, and I think it's going to be neat to honor him and give him his little bit of praise for coming from Lebanon and going through our process of school.
Can you give him the key?
Going to give him the key to the city? Yep, absolutely.
Awesome.
I don't even have one, but he's going to get one.
We don't want you to have one.
I know, I know.
If, I want to say, this is just, one, I wanted to thank everybody, I got a lot of nice sentiments and stuff, everybody knows that I had a loss, death in the family, and I appreciate many of your thoughts, concerns, and prayers. When I was back there, I was talking to my dad, and he was mayor of our small town growing up in Kalispell, Montana. And we saw somebody at my sister's funeral that we hadn't seen in, you know, 25 years, and this was a kid that was a wrestler in high school, and he ended up, he was a really good wrestler, went on, and I think he was like one out from the Olympics one year, and he won a couple of national tournaments and all this stuff. And he came back on the airplane, and my dad showed up at the airport and gave him a key to the city. And that was a thing this kid remembered 20 years later, was the one story he wanted to, so I don't minimize this key to the city, it's a big deal.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things to back up a little bit about this dog ordinance. I've got a little dog, and she's turned into a TV watcher, and there's certain commercials that she just hates, and she'll just get up and bark her head off when, even when the music starts for that commercial. Here she goes, right up to the TV. What are you supposed to do with something like that?
Ask her back, because she's a dog expert.
There you go.
This is seriously our council discussion this evening?
Well, if you're, if you're Councillor Grizzle, you'd video it and put it on YouTube or Facebook or something, so.
Yes.
And waste my time with it.
Exactly right, Bob.
Well, the other item is Wayne and Walt, myself and Shelley Garrett, attended the tour out at the Veterans Home yesterday, and I was very impressed with it, they're ahead of schedule and on budget, and man, it looks great out there. And I was real impressed that they're using quite a bit of wood in their beams and everything out there. Kind of signifies the forest industry that we had here. It was fantastic. Now, I had heard beginning that they were going to have some two beds in a room, but all of these 154 are going to be singles. So it's coming along real good, and boy, the next tour, you want to be sure and go out there. I plan on going again, just to see the improvements on it. This is going to be great for the city of Lebanon.
I'd like to be invited to the next one.
Is that what they're talking about, fall?
Oh, they were talking about finishing in August and opening in October, is what they told me. I think that's right, isn't it, Alex?
Yeah.
Finish by mid-August, and have a small group like 24 in by mid-August.
Yeah.
Everybody in.
It's going to be beautiful.
When does the hotel break ground?
I've talked to a couple of contractors who are putting in bids for some of the work, and that was within the last couple of weeks, so I suspect they're going through the final plans, bids at this point, to get the project off the ground. I have not seen a building permit yet. They don't need to go, they already have their land use approval, it's just a matter of doing it. We suspect it will be very soon. Also, speaking of the ODVA project, I talked to the construction manager, and he had nothing but praise for our contract building official, Sean Eaton, doing an excellent job. He said he just loves working with him, but also gave praise to Ed Patton, our senior engineer, who's working with him on all the public facility issues. So again, staff is working well with the projects here in town, so I just want to share that.
The last I'd heard, fall, again, on that building, too?
To break ground?
No, to actually be, to be ready.
That was what I had thought.
I thought, but I haven't heard any updates, so.
Mid-August.
Yeah, we'll see. Any other questions, discussion? Okay, with that, we have last opportunity for public comments. Anybody like to address the council?
Me again, opening my big mouth. On your home out here, does the city's building department have fire, life, and safety, or does that have to go to Salem?
Fire, life, and safety is covered by the local fire district, Lebanon Fire District.
Not all of it. I was in that stage of the game for about 20 years, and the jurisdictions that didn't have the full fire, life, and safety, had to send their plans to Salem to get tended to.
We review all the plans here except for electrical.
So then you do have fire life.
Yes, and we do coordinate with the Lebanon Fire District on fire safety matters. I want to say, this is, I've worked for a number of communities in my consulting career, and this is, it just, I still pinch myself today, the fact that this city cooperates very closely with the fire district in reviewing these plans, and that really moves things along. So we have a very good working relationship with the fire district.
Got any building department at all? That's number one, is you work with that fire department, because what the structural and mechanical does, the fire department steps over a little further, so if you don't work together, your planning department can come through and finalize that structure, the fire marshal can come in behind him and lock the doors. So if you work together.
They're learning it from the beginning of the process, aren't they?
Exactly, and I am well aware of that, and I've had that situation in other communities. Literally, the fire marshal was sitting down when they first laid out the plans, and we went through the planning process. He's been involved from the get-go.
Fifteen years since I retired, but back then, there were small jurisdictions like Lebanon and et cetera this size, that didn't have the fire license. Had to send it to Salem. Kept all the money in town instead of supporting.
We do it all here.
Good.
Thanks, Bill. Any other comments from the public? Okay, seen none, will adjourn. And we do have the annual jail tour after.